Same as body, same as breath. May we live our lives as poems of gratitude that we may create the future here in the present in reverence to the past. May the names of every water, body, sky we've ever loved be the blessings that bind us to each other, the song that sings us back. Thank you.
Thank you so much TC. Now if you would stand if you are able for the posting of the colors. We have the posting by the Tucson Fire Department Honor Guard Pipes and Drums, the Tohono O'Otom Honor Guard and the Pasquayaki Honor Guard. And if you would please remain standing after the posting of the colors for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
[Inaudible] 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 [Inaudible]
Thank you. That was the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop Number 446, and we're grateful to have them here this morning. And now we have a special welcome from Chair Jose and Vice Chairwoman Johnson of the Tohono O'Otom Nation and Chair Hernandez of the Pasquayaki Tribe. Please welcome them to the stage.
Good day to everyone. What do you say Tucson? In our, in our language, I always think about this, and we have no words for welcome. Because in our culture and our tradition, everyone is always welcome. You don't need a word to be welcome because you're already welcome to begin with. Our words are, what do you say? How are you? We're always worried about your well-being. So just know that since its time of memorial, our lands have always been welcoming to many folks regardless of race, color, or creed. This is a special place. This is a holy place. Tucson, Arizona. They already said, is from an Autumn word. You stand. This city and the surrounding cities is on the lands of holy grounds. And we, the generations of today, have the responsibility to take care of the land and take care of the people. In my language, I talked about how special this day is. To recognize the individuals of this government that have a responsibility for the children and the elders and everyone, all of us, the people. So with that, on behalf of the Tohono O'Otom Nation, Honorable Mayor and the Council, thank you for having us. You are always welcome to the Tohono. Tohono is desert. When we say Tohono O'Otom, it's desert people. We are desert people. I guess in a sense, you all are desert people. You live here, right? You're just not enrolled in the Tohono O'Otom Nation. Have a great day. Welcome, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council. Thank you for the invitation.
Tucsonians, I just want to say thank you for being here today. Thank you to Mayor and Council for all that you do as a leadership, in your leadership role. I know how hard it can be. I'm from Phoenix. I moved to Cassidy Ground and I work in Sal. So there's no, uh, there's no set way to operate as, in leadership. You just do. Because you know why? You're all in our hearts. Everything that we do, we work hard for our people, for our communities. And thank you for that extension here in Tucson for all that you do, Council, and all that you're going to do, and all the plans, and all the people that communicate what's needed out there in our communities. So, and working together is very important too. So we appreciate all of that leg, all that groundwork. Um, you know, and it's just such an honor to always be in the presence of Mayor Romero and her team, and also our fellow tribal leaders. Thank you for the opportunity to get up here and say a few words. And just looking at you, you guys are a beautiful bunch. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Not as tall as Karla. I'm Jolene Hernandez, Chairman of the Pasquayaki Tribe. And I also want to thank Regina Romero, Mayor, for giving me the invitation to come out here and say a couple of words on behalf of the Pasquayaki Tribe. We are collaborating a lot of, uh, because the common goal that we have is the same, I believe, as the same as Tohono O'Otom. Protecting the land, doing better for our community, and trying to strive, make it look better. And that's one of the common goals that we share. And this is why I think that working together with this city council, Tohono O'Otom, that we will flourish and make this city look as the best that it could look. But I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a couple of words. Thank you.
Thank you all. If you'd like to take your seats, we'll begin the city council meeting. Council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call. Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Ulik? She's absent, excuse me. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Here.
And Mayor Romero? Here. Item two, Mayor and Council comments and outgoing council members. I would like to first and foremost thank Councilmember Ulik, who could not be here today even though she tried. She is in Michigan with family. But I want to thank her for her more than 24-plus years of service to our community. It has been my wonderful and great pleasure to be able to sit at this table with the wise and the caring and the so intelligent council member Karen Ulik. She has always been, always been there for Tucsonans and the city and this council. And she has served with wonderful honor, and I know that she does this for the benefit of our community. I also want to thank Councilmember Roque Perez for holding his hand up high and volunteering for this work on the, on the council. He did complete the term of Councilmember Richard Fimbres, who spent 16 years serving his community in so many different capacities. And I want to thank Councilmember Fimbres as well. He has always been a public servant, and whether it was in his role at Pima College Governing Board, or at the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, or at council, Councilmember Fimbres served the city of Tucson and its citizens with honor and distinction. And Councilmember Perez, thank you so much for your time on the council. You have been a breath of fresh air and light and have brought to our community new ideas. And I really look forward to your continued service to our community. With that, I would like to open it up, especially Councilmember Perez and the rest of the council to add any comments if you'd like. Councilmember?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Today's bittersweet, to say the least, but I'm incredibly excited for Councilwoman Barajas. When, earlier this year, when, when Councilmember Fimbres had announced that he would resign, the first call that I made was to Selena. And at the time, I didn't know Selena personally, but if you know Selena, you know that everyone's a friend, and she always welcomes a conversation. And I had asked her, do you think that you would jump in? And at the time, we didn't know that council would make the decision not to appoint someone that was already in the running. And Selena had replied with, no, I'm building something. And I think that in a moment like this, under a federal administration that thrives on disengagement, someone like Selena who can invigorate and give life to a community that needs that representation is a, is a service that frankly doesn't begin today. It began when you threw your hat in the ring. So thank you. I'm incredibly excited for you. I will say, serving on this council has obviously been one of the many honors of my, uh, one of the, one of the greatest honors of my life thus far. You know, I think that sitting from, right in the middle, sitting from one end to Karen Yulich and then to you, I think not many mayors, people don't realize, not many mayors experience a moment of congruence where you're dealing with a utility franchise agreement to unprecedented major economic developments, a regional transportation plan, the list goes on. In one six-month stretch, and I don't know why I volunteered for that, knowing that that was going to happen. But I think all the more thankful. When I came in, I had my eyes set on really giving life to the seat. And, you know, our first decision was reversing a decision on our investments in early childhood education, sustaining that investment to the benefit of Sunnyside and Flowing Wells, you know, in partnership with Councilmember Dahl. And since then, we've done everything from protecting free transit while making steps to ensure that it's safe and building capacity to address safety concerns, declaring a housing and homelessness emergency, and, and removing barriers to expanding, expanding shelter, advancing water conservation in the face of large-scale development. But I think most of all, the most personal experience, having lost my younger brother to fentanyl, being able to call for the joint session of Pima County and really, I think, coming into this moment under the Safe City Initiative, and in the moment where Pima County took unprecedented action and investments to address homelessness and the opioid crisis, I think was a momentous honor and extremely surreal experience. And so I'm incredibly thankful to you all for having selected me in that moment. We made a half a million in investments to our South Side on everything from early childhood education to immigrant support, to women's shelter, to housing security. And I think that was all the more possible with the support that I had from my Chief of Staff, Lupita Robles. Lupita, can you put your hand up? We've got to give it up to you, Lupita. Lupita took great care of me, and before that, she took great care of Councilmember Fimbres. She'll continue on in her journey with the city, but coming with the close of my term, we're also saying goodbye to some awesome team members as well, and Lita Reyes, as well as Mary Kuchar, who had also been such kind and monumental supports to our folks on the South Side. So I want to say an incredible thanks to them, in addition to Gabriel, who'll continue on, Ray Estrada, and Kaylee Baker, two of my phenomenal interns from U of A, who I know will continue to do great things. And all that being said, as I step away, hopefully, fingers crossed, we haven't figured that out, stepping back into my role within the Metro Education Commission, now Southern Arizona Education Council. And I hope that from a year from now, that I'll be your fiercest ally in the legislature, Mayor. Thank you.
You heard it here. You said in front of everyone. I'm counting on that, Councilmember Perez. Any other of my council colleagues want to add a few words?
Good morning. Good morning. Buenos dias, everyone. Thank you all for being here. It's such a special, momentous occasion to have two new council members on the city council that I'm really proud of their work and getting through this journey, and then also continuing to serve with Councilmember Kevin Dahl. I want to give my, my love to Councilmember Ulik. She texted us this morning just to wish us love and cheer us on, and I'm really going to miss serving on this council with her. It's been, it's also, you know, been, been an honor to get to learn from her. She was first elected in 2003 and was the first out queer person on the city council, also led as, thank you. You know, it's, it's important to say that because it opened up, you know, a pathway for more of us to, to get elected and to not be afraid to be all of who we are in front of this very public stage. I, I think what I will take with me about Councilmember Ulik is that she is a coalition builder and very eloquent speaker, and I will definitely, you know, miss her consejos. But like Mayor Romero said, we will be tapping her, a lot of our BCCs that we have in the city, encouraging any of y'all. We have a lot of empty BCCs, and it's, it's important to have a diverse representation on these BCCs so that our community is, is heard and giving guidance to this mayor and council. I also want to thank Councilmember Rocky Perez for stepping up, stepping into, to the challenge. This summer, we had an opportunity to go to Chicago for Local Progress, which is an organization that supports progressive local elected officials from city council, county board of supervisors, and school board members. And Rocky cracked me up because he said, I see what you're doing, Lane, you're trying to radicalize me. Go for it. So you, you heard it here, he's running for state ledge, and we're going to hold him to that. Rocky, so thank you so much for, for bringing your energy, your commitment to young people. It's, it's always something that has centered, you know, been at the center of a lot of my, my work, but you being young and being able to, to connect with young people and bring them into the fold of local governance has been a game changer, what you've done with the Metropolitan Education Commission. I think you changed its name recently. It's going to take me a while to...
Southern Arizona Education Council.
There you go. And I just, you know, as you continue your journey, you know, that you, your North Star continues to be, you know, that fight for, for social justice and centering our most vulnerable in our communities. Thank you again for, for your time and serving with us.
Councilmember Cunningham?
To Councilmember Perez, thank you for finishing out Councilmember Fimbres's term. You didn't have a standing job. You have a bright future ahead of you as a, as a policymaker and as a leader. It's, uh, it's, it's very exciting to see a young person such as yourself achieve so much so young. And I think you have a great path ahead of you, a long time. Most importantly, the thing that has struck me about you is your dedication and advocacy to public cert, public schools. I want you to never lose that spirit. Public schools are what make us. Public schools are special, and you keep that fight going. And to my friend Karen, so this is the third time that this was Karen's last time. And I guess that's funny a little bit, but what's really a little bit overwhelming is that it's, this is, seems like the most final time. I just don't, I'm not anticipating her getting appointed to the council again. But I've served on the council with her for on and off, a period of sixteen, fifteen and sixteen years. And quite frankly, when we first started, we weren't perfectly aligned. In this last year, but over the years, she became a friend. But in this past year, she became a special friend in that it was someone who I could talk to at any time, late at night, whatever, about all the things going on in Tucson, our lives, the careers we built, the city we tried to mow. So for Karen, I, I just say, don't be a stranger. I'm going to see her in Tucson from time to time, and I wish her just all things good because that is a dedicated public servant that we've lost. You can give a round of applause to Karen.
Yeah.
And to our, and to our two newly electeds. I'm going to tell a quick story if you'll indulge me for 35, 40 more seconds, Madam Mayor. I got appointed to the city council in 2010. At the time, there was a 14-year veteran on the council named Shirley Scott, and I didn't think she knew anything. I was 35 years old and I was, I'm Paul Cunningham, I know everything. There's a couple of things that are true in that. One is, I knew nothing, talking nothing. And it was good to have Shirley Scott tell me that I knew nothing, and I'd get all mad about it, and then it ended up she was right about everything. So for you two coming in, now I'm the old one. And there may be some stuff that I might know what I'm talking about, but the two of you have incredible, incredible awareness and incredible, incredible drive, and you demonstrated to us the leadership that Tucsonans look for. So congratulations on your election, and we're looking forward to getting you sworn in.
So I'm going to invite my other council colleagues if they want to add something for Councilmember Perez and Councilmember Ulik. And then we're going to move to the oath of office, and then we can welcome our, our, our new council with comments. So Councilmember Dahl?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Karen will be watching this, if not now, later, and I just want to say some words of praise. I've lived in Ward Three, I've lived in Ward Three for 40-plus years, and for many of those years, she was my council member and served my family, my neighborhood, Ward Three, so well. She's been an example to me of how a council member should be compassionate, should be thoughtful, she would dig into issues, she would look at all sides of an issue, and could express herself as to the conclusion that she came to so very well. We're going to miss her. In Ward Three, she was elected several times. She served out the term of Paul Durham when he could no longer serve, and then she moved. And then she served out the term of Steve Kozicek and did a great job all those many years. It's been a pleasure serving with you, Karen, and look forward to seeing you out and about in real life. I met Rocky Perez when he came into my office representing the nonprofit that he works for, the Metropolitan Education Commission. And my career's been in nonprofits, and I often judge people who work in nonprofits or analyze how well they're doing. And he was doing great. For someone so young, he was such a great advocate for that group. And he sucked me right into thinking that they're doing good stuff, which they are. It was no surprise to me that, that he applied and we selected him, but what was a surprise? He was a natural. I mean, he was great in the nonprofit world, and he'll go back to that group and serve for a while. But he is a consummate elected official and did so much, so much good here in the short six months he was with us. Thank you, Rocky, for being a part of our team for a while, and I look forward to continuing to support your career wherever it takes you.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief so we can get you two up here because we've got some work to do today. So it's always fun to go last because everything that I would have said has already been said. I just want to also share my gratitude to Councilmember Ulik. She also played a role in why I'm sitting here today through her, her championing of, of me and other women being in these positions. And she's intelligent and amazing to work with, and I will miss working with her. And to Councilmember Perez, you're so far away over there, my friend, but over the past six months, I have been amazed at what you have demonstrated in terms of your intelligence, your intention, your natural leadership, and it's been such an honor to work with you. And you are such a fun person to work with on top of all of that. So I wish you all the best in your future, and I know you're going places, and don't forget about us when you make it big.
And then I just also want to add that Councilmember Ulik stepped in to finish the term of Councilmember Steve Kozicek. And so I want to also add my gratitude to Councilmember Kozicek for serving for so many years to the residents of Ward Six and the residents of Tucson. With that, we move on to item three. Oaths of Office. Alrighty, we have come to the place where we're all excited about this morning. So I want to personally congratulate Councilmembers Kevin Dahl on his reelection, Councilmembers elect Selena Barajas and Miranda Schubert on their election as well. And we will, yes, we will start with the Oath of Office. We will now commence with a swearing. We will now commence with a swearing in. May I ask Councilmember Dahl to please move to the podium? And Susan Message, City Clerk, will administer the oath of office to Councilmember Kevin Dahl, representing Ward Three.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Dahl.
I, Kevin Dahl.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
And rules and regulations.
And rules and regulations.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember Ward Three.
Of Councilmember Ward Three.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God, or so I do affirm.
So help me God, and I do affirm.
Congratulations. Will Councilmember-elect Selena Barajas please approach the podium? Gracie Rodriguez and Sofia Luna Barajas will administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect Selena Barajas. And you can invite your entire family if you'd like.
I, Selena Barajas. Oh, repeat after me, sorry.
I, Selena Barajas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Resolutions and rules.
Resolutions and rules.
And regulations of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
And regulations of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember Ward Five.
Of Councilmember Ward Five.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, Councilmember Barajas. Will Councilmember-elect Schubert please move to the podium? And Deborah Dethrange will administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect Miranda Schubert.
I, Miranda Schubert, do solemnly affirm.
I, Miranda Schubert, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the ordinances, resolutions, and rules and regulations of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
And the ordinances.
Resolutions.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
And rules and regulations.
And rules and regulations.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember Ward Six.
Of Councilmember Ward Six.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
Of the City of Tucson, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations, Councilmember Schubert. Congratulations. Item four.
Organization of the Council.
What is the council's pleasure on our next vice mayor?
First, we need to do a roll call.
Okay. Hold on just a second.
Wait, hold on. Do they exit?
They take the stage, and Rocky exits.
Okay. All righty, so now, before we start inviting our new council up, we're going to say goodbye to our councilmember from Ward Five. Now we can move on to item four, and we welcome Councilmembers Selena Barajas and Councilmember Schubert. Now we go on to item four.
Organization of the Council.
All righty. What is the council's pleasure on...
Sorry, we do roll calls.
Oh, my God. I'm ready to go. We need you to do a roll call. Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Barajas?
Here.
Ms. Schubert?
Here.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Here.
And Mayor Romero?
Here.
And here, very happy here, too. All righty. I'd like to invite our new councilmembers, if they'd like to make some comments first. Councilmember Barajas?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to make some comments. Well, first of all, thank you all for being here. Good morning, Tucson. Sitting here today is one of the greatest honors of my life, surrounded by you all, my family, friends, cousins, many cousins, neighbors, and the community that helped raise me. Yes, Ward Five. It is my privilege to serve as your city councilmember for Ward Five and the first woman ever to do so. As a fourth-generation Tucsonan, Ward Five is the place that shaped my family, where my parents, Renee and Gracie Rodriguez, please raise your hands if you didn't see them earlier, dedicated their entire careers to serving students and families at Sunnyside Unified School District. And where my husband, Abraham, and I are now raising our daughters, Sofia Luna and Mia Sol, to understand what it means to serve, uplift, and give back to the place you love, respect, and call home. I come from a family of public educators, and they taught me to work hard, to take pride in our community, especially on the South Side, and to always do what's right. Long before them, my grandparents, great-grandparents, great-great-grandparents laid the foundation for the city we get to experience today. And it is my duty to honor their legacy through service to Tucson. Yes. Every street, every school, every neighborhood gathering has helped shape who I am. As an urban planner, a mother, a small business owner, and someone who has spent years working alongside our families, youth, community partners, and local entrepreneurs, many who are here in this room today, I've learned that the strongest solutions come directly from the people who live there, who live here. I stand here today carrying the voices, hopes, and dreams of generations of Tucsonans, voices that deserve to be part of every decision we make. Together, we can build a Tucson that honors where we come from, responds to the realities our families face daily, and looks ahead with intention and courage. That means listening to you all and delivering. It means investing in our parks, our public spaces. Yes. And the places where our neighbors become family, while also ensuring our streets are safer for everyone. It means protecting our water and preserving our land for the next seven generations to come. It means supporting the businesses that make Tucson Tucson. And it means planning with purpose so the next generation inherits a city that is thriving, resilient, and full of opportunity. I am here for the long haul. I am ready to put in the work day in and day out alongside my amazing team and each of you. Thank you for trusting in me. Thank you for believing in what's possible for Ward Five. Now let's get ready and build this vision together. Gracias. Thank you.
Councilmember Schubert?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. I'm honored to be entering the council at the same time as you and for all the things that we're going to do together. Thank you so much, everybody who's taken the time out to be here and sharing the special moment with us. I want to thank my family and my team who are taking up the rose over there. It's been a beautiful morning, so I hope you all are having fun. Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and fellow council colleagues, for the warm welcome. I look forward to connecting with each councilmember one-on-one on a regular basis and looking for opportunities to collaborate in the service of making Tucson a city that works for everyone. I'm ready to show up and to listen and to learn and to do the work. We are putting together an amazing team at the Ward Six office, and we're so excited to build collegial and effective relationships with the many city departments, offices, and workers who make the city go. They're dedicating their time and their talents to serving our constituents, and I vow to work tirelessly, day in and day out, to improve your quality of life and to make us more connected, more trusting of each other, better relationships, really just making Tucson more welcoming, more accessible, safer, and more joyful for all. So thank you so much. I'm honored to be here.
Any of my colleagues? Councilmember Dahl?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say a few words of thanks. Thank you to everyone who's supported me during this campaign. I'm especially grateful to my wife, Pam Miller, and son, Brian Dahl. They're over there. Some of you might know Brian as hashtag the guy who dances on Congress. I had incredible campaign staff, Rodrigo Guerrero, Anna Marufo, and Emmy Martinez. Your awesome Ward Three staff are here. Please stand up. Katie Bolger, Shannon Jenkins, Arnie Bermudez, Naomi Lee, and Mike Edmonds. And a shout out to the three staff who have moved on, Kristin Woodall, CJ Boyd, and Marlene Avellino. I'm proud to be re-elected to serve the 33rd-largest city in the United States and the town that we all love. I'm proud to serve alongside my incredible colleagues, new colleagues, and the mayor. And I'm proud to help lead the resistance to the Trump administration.
Oh, you're done? I thought you were going to go on and on. I was waiting for another paragraph. Kevin, any of my colleagues want to add some additional words? All righty. All righty, so we move on to item five.
This is the item you've been waiting for, Mayor. Selection of the vice mayor.
City Manager's Communication Number 381, dated December 2, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 24043 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 24043 relating to administration and the vice mayor of the mayor and council, selecting a vice mayor to serve a one-year vice-mayoral term commencing on December 2, 2025, and expiring on December 7, 2026.
What is the council's pleasure? Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to begin by thanking both of our colleagues who threw their name in the hat to be vice mayor next year. So I want to thank Councilmembers Cunningham and Santa Cruz for being willing to step up and take additional responsibility on top of the role of councilmember. That is not always an easy thing to do, so thank you both for that. I also want to reiterate why I supported the changes we made to the vice mayor selection process in the recent past. I wanted to support creating a system where every member of this body who wants to has the opportunity to serve. And some members may choose to put their name in the hat, some may not. But I think it's really important to me that everyone has the opportunity to grow in this role. With that in mind, I want to turn to the choice that we have at hand today, and I want to speak in support of appointing Councilmember Cunningham as our next vice mayor. Paul shows up where it matters. During the recent federal shutdown and SNAP disruption, Paul organized a food drive and personally helped assemble mealboxes in families struggling in his ward and beyond. He brings his social work background into the field, meeting people exactly where they are, in the streets of Tucson, and it works. Of the people he has engaged with personally, 91% of those individuals have accepted services. And that's the level of effectiveness that we need in this moment in time. He supports youth and strengthens community spaces. Paul has been a longtime leader for Parks and Recreation. Anyone who knows Paul knows this to be very true. He's helped secure a public-private partnership that created the Judith Blair Courts at Palo Verde Park. He also has championed for a very long time Wednesday Hoops in Ward Two, giving youth a safe, positive place after school. And he consistently turns ideas, and he has a lot of those, into tangible improvements for his constituents and the residents of Tucson broadly. Paul brings forward practical, innovative solutions. He recently introduced the HOUSE program, which stands for Housing Alternative for Urban Strength, which helps working people living in shelters transition into permanent housing by lowering the barriers that keep them stuck. Very, very proud of that program. He listens and responds to real community concerns, including action on environmental risks tied to fuel tanks. He continually pushes for ways to strengthen the city's enterprise funds and build long-term financial resilience. And he's not afraid to take on difficult issues when they matter. And we're entering a very challenging budget cycle, and Paul has the experience that we need in this role. As of the last numbers I saw from the city manager, we're looking at over $70 million projected deficit next fiscal year. And only two members, the mayor and Councilmember Cunningham, have been at this table after the 2019 election. have been at this table after the 2008 recession and have navigated these waters, and Paul, you are one of those people. And I know that you understand how to guide us through this financial instability with steadiness and people-centered approach. And you also bring unity at a time when unity is essential. National political tensions are spilling into local government more than ever before, and Paul lowers the temperature and brings people together. He's trusted across political and community lines, and as we make tough and sometimes unpopular decisions this coming year, we need a Vice Mayor who's ready to strengthen cohesion and bring everybody together. So with that, and for all those reasons, I believe that Councilmember Paul Cunningham is the right person to serve as Vice Mayor, and I move to appoint Councilmember Cunningham to serve as Vice Mayor for the upcoming term.
There's a motion. May I get a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Barajas? I don't know if it's... Councilmember Schubert?
I would like to make a substitute motion to appoint Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz for another term as Vice Mayor. Just a few remarks. I gave this decision a great deal of thought and deliberation. I carefully read the job description of what the Vice Mayor's responsibilities and duties are to the council and to the city. I also very carefully read both letters of interest. I am keen to be here on the council to work with everybody and to promote unity and collaboration and creating space where we may have disagreements on specific points, but we are all on the same side. In connecting with both Lane and Paul, I know both are very, very dedicated to making Tucson a place for everyone and for moving us forward. I think both have great ideas that I very much want to be a part of. I sincerely want to connect with both about our shared priorities. In the end, though, I'm casting my vote for the applicant whose letter most clearly outlines objectives that align with what I heard from Tucsonans across the city. I just got done knocking on thousands of doors, not just in Ward Six, but also across the city of Tucson. And the applicant whose letter directly addresses what is at stake, both as our Democratic Council as well as the many pressing issues that are of the highest priority to us here in the city. For all of those reasons that I support Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz.
There is a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So we vote on the substitute motion. May I get a roll call, please? Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Nay.
Mr. Dahl?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mrs. Barajas?
Aye.
Mick Schubert?
Aye.
Mayor Romero? Aye. Motion passes for the three. The reading and introduction of the mayor. Special reading and introduction of the mayor will be by Mark Pinade and Miltah Ortiz.
Thank you so much for inviting us. It will be just me today, so you'll make do. Buenos dias. Good morning. Here in Tucson, the sky teaches us something every day: how sunrise opens the world with possibility and how sunset closes it with color and grace. Together, they remind us change is constant, and each new day invites us to imagine something better. In my play Sanctuary, inspired by the 1980s sanctuary movement ignited here in Tucson, much of it emerging from South Side Presbyterian Church, Jeff, a character based on Reverend John Fife, looks up at our Arizona sky and reflects on what it promises. He says, "You look up at that and see that you know tomorrow will be a new day with a magnificent end like that." That spirit, hopeful, grounded, forward-looking, has always lived in this community. And Carol, a character based on the unstoppable advocate Margot Cohen, speaks to what happens when a community moves with purpose. When the community comes together and throws everything into the pot, we make magic. That's right. That magic isn't mystical. It's made by people who care, who show up, who believe Tucson is strongest when we rise together. It is the magic of the sanctuary movement. It is the magic in our neighborhoods today. And like those before us, we meet this moment with the glowing light of a Sonoran sunrise that this morning, this light guides us as we welcome our very newly inaugurated city council members and prepare to hear our mayor's State of Tucson address. It is an honor to share this morning with you as we look ahead together. I...it's okay, you can clap. Thank you. I know, I feel really formal. It's such a pleasure to be here on this great day and to introduce our mayor. We first started working with her, and when I say "we," I mean Borderlands Theater, started working with her in 2016 when we did our first Bario Stories. And in 2017, her office, which was Ward One at the time, joined us for a year of meeting with Bario Anita residents and artists and city officials. And at the time, Ward Member, Ward One, Mayor Regina Romero, listened to what the residents wanted. They wanted the Ori Park Pool opened, and she was able to do that. By the end of the year, by the time that we debuted Bario Stories, she was able to reopen the pool for the residents. And it's a...yes, please, yes! It was a great...it was a great achievement, and it spoke to the power of community working with city officials and artists coming together for a purpose: to celebrate our communities, to celebrate art, and to do what people want done, like having a pool that the neighborhood can enjoy. So, you know, it's great. I love that we have a mayor who is a great supporter of the artists, of artists, of Yes. Of community enrichment and the environment. All things that make me really proud to be a Tucsonian. I am so grateful that I get to introduce the first Latina mayor, Mayor Regina Romero. Buenos dias, everyone. Good morning. ¿Cómo están? It's a happy day in Tucson. We just made history in welcoming five women to the council, the most we've ever had. We have three Latinas. When I first started, I was the first Latina ever elected to the council in 2007. And we have two amazingly queer colleagues on the council. I think it's one of the most diverse councils we've ever had, and I am so, so proud and happy to serve alongside my colleagues on the council. So, muchísimas gracias. Thank you so much for being here to celebrate with us. I want to first acknowledge that we are standing on the lands that have been stewarded by the Tojono'otan since time immemorial and the Pasquayaki people who have lived in the Sonoran Desert for thousands of years. It is important to me that we ground ourselves by naming and acknowledging the histories of these lands. I am grateful to Chairman Jose of the Tojono'otan Nation and Chairman Hernández of the Pasquayaki Tribe for being with us today and for your amazingly continued partnership. I am committed...ah! I am committed to the work we continue to do together to acknowledge the sovereignty of our indigenous relatives and our collaboration into the future. I want to thank my husband, Ruben Reyes, the first dude of Tucson! And my children, Emiliano and Luciana, and my entire family. Thank you to my colleagues, councilmembers Lane Santa Cruz, Paul Cunningham, Kevin Dahl, Nikki Lee, Roque Pérez, and Karen Ulick. I'd also like to offer a warm welcome to our new council members, Selena Barajas and I'd like to thank my team at the mayor's office, the city manager, Tim Tamir, the entire city of Tucson executive leadership team, and city staff. Working together, we make sure that all Tucsonans are well-served. But the city of Tucson does not do this work alone. Together with my colleagues on the council and city staff, we work with public, private, and academic partners, and with regional, state, and federal governments. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all our elected officials here today and those that represent Tucson in Phoenix and in Washington, D.C., and members of their staff. Thank you. My vision for Tucson is of a safe, just, and sustainable city that provides economic opportunity for all Tucsonans. We have made significant progress over the past six years, but we still face tremendous challenges: an economy that too often works only for those at the top, a state legislature that ignores our public schools and increasingly takes the burden away from big corporations, placing it at the feet of cities, workers, and their families; and a president who is making life more unaffordable: working for working families by cutting access to healthcare, to SNAP benefits, to resources for housing, the very things that help people live healthy and good-quality lives. But in Tucson, voters doubled down on progressive, forward-thinking policies. They doubled down on creating affordable housing and affordability for workers, on free and reliable transit and investments in mobility, on investment in climate resiliency and securing a safe, clean water supply, investments in our parks and neighborhoods, and low-barrier shelter with wraparound services. These are all policies that mayor and council have been creating for the past six years. Tucson, yes, Tucson has a richness of talent, natural beauty, and heritage that makes us the unique place we call home. Only together can we continue to build a community that strengthens neighborhoods, combats climate change, invests in our students, improves our infrastructure, and builds a stronger, more resilient economy that benefits all of us. As your mayor, I continue to take bold action, changing the systems that have led to historic disinvestment and inequities that were decades in the making. Working alongside my colleagues on the council, our city manager, and our executive leadership team, community and jurisdictional partners, we have identified the gaps in services and are filling those gaps with concrete solutions that have never existed before in the city of Tucson. Through our Safe City Initiative, we are committing to a holistic and focused approach to delivering safety to our residents. We can and must continue to offer compassionate care and hold those committing crime in our city accountable. Our city, our Safe City Initiative, is an umbrella that holds all of the innovative services we have been providing to Tucsonans for the last six years and adds new solutions through innovation, collaboration, and the smart use of our resources. In my open letter to Tucsonans, I spoke to the urgency of this moment. I shared how the city created and is expanding our Safe City deployments and the direction my colleagues on the council and I gave to make sure that opioid settlement funds are used for a safer center pilot, which will create a sobering alternative facility for recovery, a diversion program that moves people into treatment instead of jail. I also shared that we requested a transit safety and security plan we intend to put into action immediately. Mayor and council took forward, looks forward to our work with Pima County, South Tucson, and Marana to direct opioid settlement investments to fund real, tangible solutions for the public health crisis of fentanyl and opioid addiction on our streets. We need to use opioid settlement funds to create the detox and treatment services we need, because we all know incarceration is not the goal. Treatment and recovery is. We acknowledge that more work needs to be done: more treatment for mental and behavioral health, more treatment to help people fight drug addiction, and more focus on getting illegal guns off our streets. We will strengthen our focus on intervention and treatment and on addressing the root causes of generational poverty through enacting the policies in our prosperity initiative. We have expanded our housing navigation, our street outreach, care coordination, and crisis response teams. We've deepened our commitment to keeping our residents safe while preserving the dignity and rights of our unsheltered neighbors. We've invested in community safety, health, and wellness by hiring four amazing leaders: Brandy Champion as our program director, Alison Chappelle as our Housing First Program Director, Jason Hamilton as our multi-agency resource manager, and our newest addition and newest hire, Oscar Medina, our Violence Prevention and Intervention Manager. We've invested in responsive services like adding day trucks to our fire department, bringing video alternatives to jail, and more Safe City deployments, and expanded our community courts. We have the goal of adding 50 additional commissioned police officers within the next year alone. I want to thank all of our city Tucson employees, police officers, firefighters, care coordinators, outreach workers, Pima County employees, everyone who is helping to keep our city safe. They do amazing and incredible work. Another way we are working to create safety and prosperity in our community is to continue to accelerate housing production, streamline approvals, and support the construction of thousands of new homes across every income level in our city. There are two main focal points as we work to build affordability in Tucson: more accessible, affordable housing, and more economic opportunity in workforce training, especially for our working families and young people here in Tucson. From apartments to duplexes to casitas to affordable homeownership, mayor and council are creating more housing opportunities at a time when we need it most, while protecting our unique neighborhoods here in Tucson. We made meaningful investments in expanding our low-barrier shelter and transitional housing, especially for people experiencing homelessness. In the past year... In the past year, our Housing First Emergency Shelters, street outreach workers, and permanent supportive housing resources have served over 2,000 people that needed a safe place to call home. That's really something to celebrate. And while there always be more to do, we must appreciate the work being done to serve the people who need the most help. We are just six weeks into our Star Village Safe Sleeping Site, which is providing housing and wraparound services to women in partnership with Primavera Foundation and O Pueblo Community Services. More than 40 individuals have been served. Two have completed the program and moved on to more permanent housing. Others are still working on their goals. I want to thank and give my deep appreciation to Tisha Tolman and the Primavera Foundation staff, and Tom Ledwicki and the OPCS staff for working with us on this important pilot project. Thank you. Working together to identify new ways of providing care is key to fighting homelessness. I want to appreciate all of the nonprofits, community groups, food providers, and jurisdictions that are helping to create the social safety net for our most vulnerable Tucsonans. Creating affordability is a cornerstone of our work. In 2025, we opened developments like Milagro On Oracle and Affordable Housing Development, providing 63 units for seniors. We opened the Amazon Hotel, which provides permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness in 30 refurbished studio apartments. Here, they will receive supportive services until they are ready to transition to independent living. Also in 2025, the city broke ground on Sugar Hill on Stone Apartments, which will bring 108 bedrooms in 66 affordable units to this neighborhood in late 2026. Projects like these create hundreds of good-paying jobs for Tucsonans. These projects are excellent examples of the partnerships and skillful layering of funding from multiple sources working together for the benefit of Tucsonans. The Housing Affordability Strategy for Tucson, combined with a community corridor tool we passed in 2025, encourages and incentivizes private housing development. As mayor, I will continue to use all of the tools at our disposal and push to create the ones we need to address the housing crisis in front of us. Amazon Flats, the first development to use the community corridor tool, will bring an additional 59 one-bedroom affordable housing units. Without the CCT, only 30 units would have been allowed, and the rest of the property would have remained a parking lot. We are looking forward to the creativity and innovation of our local developers who should take advantage of this tool. This will help us reuse and encourage activation of vacant buildings throughout our city. This year, in the mayor and council's state legislative agenda, we are asking the state legislature to introduce rent stabilization, more support for affordable homeownership, additional housing, additional funding for the Housing Trust Fund, and for additional low-income housing tax credit projects, so that our very own nonprofit, El Pueblo Housing Development, is an even bigger part of Tucson's housing solution. We are creating an additional 1,200 units of housing through our development arm, which I'm so excited about. I'm also excited to share that by the end of 2025, we will close on the Tucson House, bringing 400 affordable refurbished units to Tucson. This project is a mix of low-income housing tax credits, gap funding from Pima County, city and historical tax credits, and $30 million from the Federal Choice Neighborhood Grant we competed for successfully in 2023. Beyond housing, mayor and council have always worked on creating affordability to control costs for residents. We have helped low-income families pay for our water utilities and stopped water shut-offs when necessary. We work to bring direct funding to stabilize the cost of electricity for low-income households with our solar panel installation program. Transit continues to be free, which saves the average family 30% of monthly expenses on transportation. Our transit system continues to fuel our local economy with ridership on the streetcar and our buses at all-time highs. The mayor and council is also investing in neighborhoods, specifically our Thrive Zones, the Foresides being served through our Violence Intervention and Vitalization Action, or VIVA, through investments in sidewalks, street repaving, tree planting, cleanup efforts, and additional investments in parks and care coordinators in apartments and schools. These types of investments in our neighborhoods create safety, opportunity, and affordability. Today in Tucson, we are feeling the very real impacts of federal policies. We are feeling the economic effects of on-again, off-again tariffs, of people being thrown off of their healthcare and food benefits, of the fear people have for being brown or having an accent or speaking Spanish, or fear of where they work. We need to stand together in this fight for affordability, for opportunity, for our neighbors, for our public schools, for public lands, for jobs, for real security for our neighbors. I want to be very clear. I will never stop fighting for the rights, the dignity, the safety of everyone in our community. We must stand united as Tucsonans know how to do. We are a welcoming community that has always worked to take care of each other, no matter our status. And as long as I am mayor, we will remain a welcoming community. Creating good-paying jobs and building a strong economy is central to a safe, healthy, and resilient city. That is why we have strengthened our small businesses and supported entrepreneurs, the heartbeat of Tucson's economy, through grants, technical assistance, and partnerships that help our local entrepreneurs compete, grow, and succeed. In 2025, our small business navigators provided approximately 350 hours of technical assistance to local small businesses, conducted 2,000 hours of training and counseling, and business accelerator programs resulted, resulting in approximately $3 million in capital expansion for locally owned and operated businesses. We are thrilled that in 2025, the Tucson Small Business Center opened and is serving local businesses every single day. This important collaboration between the city of Tucson, Groundswell Capital, and the Tucson Industrial Development Authority is bringing needed support to business owners in this difficult economic times. This past year, we kicked off the Boots to Business Reboot, which offers entrepreneurship training to veterans and their spouses. Right here in Tucson, we know supporting our veterans and their transition out of the military is good for all of us and supports our local economy. Every great city has a great transportation system that provides multiple modes of safe and accessible transportation to all residents, whether you make your daily commute by foot, bike, bus, or car. That is why I believe that the RTA Next is an important step in transportation funding. We need to continue investing in ourselves and in our future. Passing the RTA Next in March is crucial to the possibility of keeping a safe, free public transit system and lowering response times for our first responders, as well as increasing road safety. Significant improvements were made to the original RTA Next plan through community input and advocacy by this mayor and council. We requested additional citizen oversight and added language to make sure the contractors we work with are responsible and provide proper classification and a safe work environment for our workers. We added funds for pavement preservation, $140 million for arterial and collector roads, $40 million for the operation of our streetcar, $51 million in transit safety and security, and $726 million to transit regionally. It also includes funding for Tucson's Bus Rapid Transit, which is a high-capacity next step to our transit infrastructure. Bus Rapid Transit Systems are cost-effective, sustainable, and take advantage of existing road infrastructure while bringing similar economic benefits as the streetcar. In its first 10 years, the SunLink Streetcar has proven its economic benefit to Tucson. Despite the fears people had initially about housing costs or local business displacement, over the past 10 years, the 3.9-mile route has served more than 10 million riders, created over 1,200 construction jobs, it added the development of more than 1,500 new housing units, the opening of more than 50 new local restaurants and small businesses, and more than $4 billion in private investment. I have always believed that investing in infrastructure, in public infrastructure, it leverages private investment. Through Norte Sur, we are planning affordable housing ahead of the Bus Rapid Transit selected route. Voter-approved Proposition 411 is delivering tangible results to Tucson neighborhoods across every ward in our city. So far, 109 neighborhood projects have been completed, with 373 miles of roads completed. That means 27% of the Proposition 411 investments are complete, and another 931 miles are being planned. As Tucsonans, we need to say yes to investing in ourselves. And I believe that the RTA Next is a good investment for Tucson. RTA Next will create approximately 50,000 new jobs and generate over $11.9 billion in economic benefits in our region. And speaking of economic impact that is uniquely ours, Tucson's creative economy contributes over $8.4 billion locally, which includes about $431 million in cultural tourism and the creation of over 52,000 jobs. Our culture and heritage is what makes us so unique. We are celebrating our 250th year-plus of the establishment of the city of Tucson. From the, yes, 250 years, that's a lot, plus, plus, all of the history of the Tojono Otam and Pasquayaki people here. From the stories and stewardship of the Tojono Otam and the Pasquayaki people, to the historic barrios and the beautiful Sonoran Desert that define our identity, to our arts and music community, amazing murals, delicious food, festivals that attract our residents and visitors, from mariachi lovers to cyclists, to people enjoying our astral trails, to writers and readers of books, Tucson truly has something for all of us. This is how, this is something we can all say yes to. This year, I was invited to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. Our key priority is economic development that is informed by Tucsonans. Our team will focus on developing cohesive, focused economic development strategies in business attraction, international trade, and small business. We will focus on our creative economy, sports tourism, developing our place in our mega-region, stewarding our natural resources, and expanding our green economy, space research, bioscience, manufacturing, and creating the good jobs we want here in Tucson. As these efforts expand over the next months, I look forward to thinking through how we want to build wealth, expand economic opportunity, reduce poverty, create jobs, invest in our neighborhoods, and create the best quality of life for all of us. Moving forward into 2026, with our new council, we will continue to have a laser focus on building affordability, creating economic opportunity, investing in our roads, and deepening equity for all of us. We need to continue to lock arms, move forward together, invest in ourselves, and have the necessary conversations about how we do so when we don't have the support of the federal government or our state legislature. In Tucson, we choose community over chaos. We choose compassion over fear. And we choose opportunity over scarcity. Working together, we will make smart investments in ourselves to build a safe, resilient Tucson with economic opportunity for all. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you so much for joining us. And this council session is adjourned.